Yeah.
It's a round balance.
Oh.
And then fight the fence.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will the meeting to order?
Your call, please.
Here.
Does the meeting pass this for barrel?
Yep.
Here.
For banner?
Here.
You got it.
Here.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnsville needs and courier news file with municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifth, twenty twenty four. Please stand for the pleasure of the.
We need to see the water on the internet data. And did we follow for a little dance? Under invisible, the reading justice from.
Welcome to the June twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting, the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they could be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion.
Yeah, record that, I think.
I know. Okay, our first presentation will be from Caldwell Associates. As many of you know, we have our fourth round obligation for affordable housing, which they gave us a very short timeline to put together. So Jessica and her associates have been working hard to, along with the council, to get this put together. So I will turn it over to you, Allison.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you just need to stand on that silver X so that you can get seen on there.
Great.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. So I do have a presentation. This will just be a very brief overview of the fair share plan. To give the board an idea of what's included in it. What's on it? So there are essentially two components to the housing element in fair share plan. Firstly, the first would mean the housing element. This part of the document contains a lot of requirements from the municipal land use law, fair housing app. It's a lot of background information and data, such as demographics, population change, employment information. Then there's also inventory, the basis of how this comes up. That's about as much detail as I wanted to get into for that section, but of course, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the board. They have. So the second more, really the focus of this plan is the fair share plan. This sets forth the borough's obligations for all of the. I'll say thus far. It talks in the status of any existing affordable units. And it goes with it proposed four thousand mechanisms. Excellent. So the prior round of affordable housing in New Jersey covered nineteen eighty seven through nineteen ninety nine. The borough's obligation for the prior round was one hundred and twenty seven units. This was satisfied through a variety of mechanisms. There were some prior stable credits, these were existing units that credit for. A couple of mutual institution agreements for RCA's with the Brunswick and Kirk and Boy. The Pinerich condominium units and Roland Hills at Herbert's Fell. All of these mechanisms satisfy the obligation. So then the third round of affordable housing covered the years nineteen ninety nine, June of this year, twenty twenty five. As far as the obligation, there's really two parts to it. The first being the present need of the patient obligation that the borough has. This was fifteen units for the borough. All of these units were addressed through the implementation of a unit development improvement program as well as participation. These things that tell me the ability. So then the second. Perspective need of new construction obligation. The first obligation, perspective need obligation was two hundred and fifteen units. I won't go into too much detail about this, but just as an overview, there's a group home, a couple of one hundred percent affordable sites. Some extensions of expired controls. What that means is D restricted units that were used were set to silence. The D's were were new. And so the are credited for that. There's a community land development inclusion reason and the party site with very soon as well. And so the third round plan did account for all two hundred and fifteen credits. Next slide. So as a thrower aware, there is in March of twenty twenty four, new legislation was passed. And this determined obligations for the fourth round of affordable housing. This covers the next ten years, beginning in July. Twenty three, but. And so the borough's rehabilitation obligation for the fourth round is zero units. The prospective need, and again, that's that new construction obligation is one hundred and thirteen units. So the borough already has several existing mechanisms in place that are going to perfectly address this. And it's also regressing a couple of new inclusionary zones that order redevelopment areas to address it. You can go to the next slide. And the next. So first we have the party site inclusionary zone. This is already existing. It's the verbal has been related to a shade zone. It includes thirty one properties. This was duration adjusted in the third round and mostly the same foreground. Durational adjustments are applied when there's a lack of water in sewer. And so if water in sewer does become available, a certain number of affordable units. Certain will need to be preserved for affordable units. We're anticipating up to fifty one affordable apartments and eight, up to eight redevelopment of these credits. So the sixty five Fairmont Road inclusionary zone well is supposed to be a redevelopment zone. So the borough would personally with an area need redevelopment study, a redevelopment plan. There's four properties on the site. And it's anticipated that up to twenty eight apartments will be will be erected on the site. And it will give old state support of these. Next, we have the Claris Redevelopment Area. This is another new proposal. This includes four complete parcels and a portion of another parcel that's where the libraries located. We're anticipating up to ninety four, that's an age restricted units, but that should just be market rate units. And then eighteen of the affordable. Finally, we have the I two light industrial inclusionary overlay zone. There's three properties in this site, and we're anticipating up to one hundred and twenty five individual point five affordable units. That covers, that's basically the test notes of the fair share plan from the fourth round. After making, have you seen any questions?
Yeah, two questions. So thank you. First, can you talk to me about, okay, we're fourth rounds, I know this last mile of the legislation, but has there been any guidance from the state as to how many rounds there might be? What the, is there a goal, like just by rough, back to the napkin commerce calculation, right? We're close to now would be five hundred units in the borough. You know, we've always sort of operated on the fact that there were just twenty five hundred units total in the borough, right? So you're looking at twenty percent. But basically affordable housing sector borough. Has there been any guidance from the state as to how long this will continue?
So as it reads currently, the methodology by which the obligations were calculated is proposed to be for every ten year round moving forward. That could change, but as of right now, that's.
So it's basically in perpetuity until legislator, the legislature or governor changes.
Correct, yeah.
But we're good for ten years.
Yeah.
It's a lot of rules.
It is.
One other.
Just.
Yep. What happens if you don't get there in ten years later?
So the obligation of the borough really to zone for affordable rounding.
Have you guys still that is kind of relevant at this point to be at that year?
Yeah.
Well, can you, you need to add the Jeff's question. Can you just talk about what enforcement exists for the public's benefit as to if towns are not working towards the obligation as handed down by the state? Or they don't achieve it after around after around sort of what the state has taken action on or like, you know, your terms like builder's remedy, et cetera, but it would be helpful to have that explained in this.
Yeah, definitely, thank you. So it's the borough does not adopt this housing element in fair share plan. It does completely open up the borough to builder's remedy lawsuits where essentially a developer comes in and is paid what I do for the zoning. And I found a site where we can fit these units in and for pretty limited in how it can address that. So it really puts it on the developer to choose where they want their thoughts, and this is a more proactive.
But in the case where we, like you said, our responsibility is zoning it, not necessarily getting it built. So if we do a zoning overlay and in ten years and nobody acts on it, what happens then?
So it's still remaining in place. I know. I believe it's new for this round, but in the appendices of the fair share plan, which is most of the doctrine that has a third, you've noticed. Site plan or preliminary site plans, rough sketches of the feasibility of a site will be to be included. So for instance, it's through an overlay zone on top of wetlands. Yeah, that wouldn't fly.
Yeah.
And so really, there's just a couple extra steps that need to be taken to know that, yeah, this can be potentially developed.
So it's really just places where there's potential.
Right.
And with a builder's remedy suit, what, what, I know it's sort of takes it out of the town's control somewhat in terms of like they're allowed to sort of go beyond what the underlying zoning permits? But are there some governance, you know, governance on that? Is it like, I mean, they can't just build like whatever they want. They couldn't build like a twenty story building. Like what, any, any just parameters in terms of what a builder's remedy suit allow them to do?
Sure.
We'd be rip, get it court with the side. So really, the town, we give it enough concern, not only is the location in the sites, but also the density, type of, you know, for requirements and things like that. Yes, certainly, but some kind of, it's something reasonable, but probably.
So it's the court that makes the decision.
We, we do that.
Yeah.
And Jack, what's the prevalence of builder's remedy lawsuits in the state at that level?
We've been fortunate, and we had many challenges to our prior plans. He can fast participate in the third round and the second. And challenges and it was ready since filed this. So he's pretty dry in this area, actually.
Okay. Thursday, during the planning work?
Yeah, Thursday, the planning board will hear the probably the same presentation. And they have advertised the plan on our website for ten days as required, so. And then Friday at eight AM, we have a oh, it's noon, it was eight, oh, it's noon, that's right, noon. Just to vote on it, so it has to be in by what, the twenty eighth? Was it the thirtieth?
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth. So, yeah.
And that presentation's already.
It, yes, it's been up for ten days. It's what we're required to do, yeah. So the entire report is on our, it's on the first page of the website. Yeah.
It's checking.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, we have minutes to approve of May nineteenth and May twenty seventh.
Looking for the minutes for May nineteenth and May twenty seventh? So yes.
All in favor? We now have an open session for the public for any items that are not listed for a public hearing. Anybody from, there's nobody on Zoom? Yes.
Hi, Brian. So, Randale, your library. I just wanted to give updates while people are asking of the library innovation. Things are going off very, very well. We have internet in the north today, we have new parking, they do. Our turn is arriving and being assembled, and we don't expect to be, we're mostly closed right now. We have the main library, the community room, and half of the community room has a lot of active programming. So you can get books from all over the libraries and stuff, and still have all the books available. So the library is open and it's going to be fully open very soon. There's a few shipments that are going to open until mid-July, but will be forthcoming. So we'll have a weird mix of temporary versions and finishes happening. They'll be ordered in September, and some readings also, you can still sign up to that, it's not just a Saturday, that's great, yeah, if people come. But you can sign up for children. And please, if you know any kids through coaching or whatever, we still have the the summer library, which has been taken over the first few days, it was really slow. But we're getting there fifteen, sixteen a day now, and.
Yeah.
So it asked me about the the list for events for the summer, the best way is just calendar on the website.
Yeah. We still have a pretty full summer. Lots of fun things.
Perfect. The brochure's right in the front of the book.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Cause I took one. And we have gotten a tour when I was there for our meeting on Tuesday, and it's really coming along. Parkin's gorgeous, I liked it a bit, and people are adapting, so, you know, it was, it's still a busy place, even with all the construction going, and so thank you. I think it's gonna be. It was, it was. Anyone else wish to be heard at this table? Seeing none, I will close the open session. And I will open the public ordinance on ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty one, and ordinance resoning lot two, block sixty two, and amending, let's get what that thing means. Twelve dash two point two of the Borough Land Development Regulations entitled zoning map. Would anyone like to be heard on this? And this is simply removing a piece that was zoned for affordable that is no longer in our plan, so we're taking it out. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing, but we'll start with Rich.
Okay, I moved past ordinance number twenty twenty five to twenty twenty one on final reading and adoption.
Second. Roll call, please.
Is there a matter?
Yes.
With the move? Yeah. With container?
Yes.
Is the matter?
Yeah.
Does anyone know?
Yes.
I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty two, and ordinance establishing the promotion process for chief of police and supplementing and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Anyone like to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Ross?
I moved to pass ordinance twenty twenty five, Jack, twenty twenty two, on final reading and about this publish.
Second. Roll call, please.
Do you guys read them?
Yeah.
The mirror?
Yes.
Is the mover?
Yes.
Is the move?
Yes.
Is the mirror?
Yes.
And we'll open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty three, a bond ordinance providing for a grant to a developer for site work associated with the construction of affordable housing in the borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating two point seven million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million five hundred and seventy thousand dollar bonds or notes to the borough for financing such appropriation. Hi. Yes, hi, Aaron.
Aaron Duff, fifty one Crossley Drive. I had some questions and comments about those ordinance. First of all, the contract that was originally awarded back in twenty eighteen, that was done pursuant to a competitive contracting process, is that correct? Anyone know?
Yes.
And what was the basis for using competitive contracting process for that, not to buy it?
Actually, it was just a new hard change for our confession. For that service.
State law required that public contracts worth over two point five million dollars be referred to the state controller's office to review for compliance with the local public contract law. Has this been done for this board?
This is not a.
This is not a public contract in a sense, and it's covered by the local public contracts law. It was a settlement for a new settlement fair share has been centered, it was according to spending plan, according to government reports.
So the, you believe that's the birth position that the contract with RPM is not subject to the local public contract law?
Yeah, that's correct.
So you do not intend to have this contractor reviewed by the state controller's levels for compliance with that law, so.
As I said, I don't think this is a contract, this particular bond works, it's not a contract.
I'm referring to the contract with RPM for someone to which we're taking out three point five million dollars in debt and pay them to complete the scattered site project.
Well, maybe you have to sure call open the construction.
So generally, just to be clear, the contract with RPM, the development contract to perform, to construct the scattered site developments, is that contract governed by the local public contracts law?
In what sense?
Does it apply, does the law apply from this contract?
We chose the development, to develop, to have.
Does the contract fall under the definition of what is included in a local public contract as far as the local public contract law is concerned?
I don't understand your question.
How about the Public Worth Contract Registration Act and the Prevailing Wage Act? Is this contract with RPM to complete the scattered site developments governed by those statutes?
This is not a contract to complete the scatter sites development, it's a bond ordinance to.
I understand that those are.
It's a bond ordinance to replenish or afford without the trust fund in accordance with their settlement agreement and according to the set standard plan and the returns and obligation from the borough.
Well, my question, my question was the contract with RPM pursuant to it for taking out this two point five million dollar bond, pack paramy to get to this contractor. Is the contract with RPM between RPM and the borough governed by the Public Worth Contract Registration Act and the Prevailing Wage Act?
No, it is not.
Okay. And why do you say that? What was it?
We are using.
Yeah.
Is the borough's intent to take a determination from the borough that later will first develop?
We're not, we don't own it anymore. Yeah, and your three minutes is up, and I think, you know.
It's like two point five. Only if you're forced to do it, you gotta keep up.
Yep.
Yeah, better.
Yeah, that's why we have rules. And I think, you know, you've advanced these. You've asked these decisions in emails, and they've been answered in emails. And our public hearing is not for you to grill the attorney, it's for you to make it.
To have a burden, to give, enter the number of public. You have to do that, burden. These are burdening files. You don't, and that's, that goes in your borough code, says the exact event, repeat the same phrase. You're gonna say, you know what, that's enough, three minutes is up. We're gonna pay two point five million dollars in that family and give it to a developer who is contractually obligated to do the job without that money. And give it to them.
He's not contracted.
Yes, under the development, under the development agreement, there is absolutely nothing in development that provides for the borough taxpayer to cover costs of construction. Those costs are assigned exclusively to the developer RPM.
I believe Nancy had sent you what the piece, the part that's in the contract, it says that it's not the shortfall.
Well, can we, can we take this in written form and respond to the new questions? But we don't wanna ignore your questions either, we wanna make sure.
So I, so my, I actually thought in my race to see before, is I'm not limiting, I'm at the base of here tonight, and ask for your question to the, Mr. Vali Law.
I mean, just a big interpretation, you should litigate it in form.
Rather here or there, I mean, you're saying that you're just not allowing the public to try to influence the decision making of the council members who are going to be voting on this ordinance. You gotta take me out because it's three minutes, they're almost on the diner. And you don't, you don't wanna hear anything that might possibly interfere with pushing through an ordinance that if I was allowed to finish, I would be able to say, oh, you shouldn't have to that.
You, you, you never been shared, you all were down for that.
But the questions you were asking were the same ones. Something new that you wanted?
Maybe related, maybe to this, this order, but they were different buttons.
But the prevailing wage, we are not obligated to pay for the wage, because it's.
You're saying, Mr. P, that the statute does not apply to the contract to.
And that, that's fine, that's fine. That's fine.
So did you have something additional that you wanted to? Go.
Just make a, just so I can make a suggestion, I mean, you can do whatever you want in terms of asking questions. I think it would be more productive, if you kind of summarized it and sort of made your points, because I think the council's interested. If there is a way to avoid being two point five, of course, we're going to listen to that and consider that.
So I'll, I'll sum up, I'll give you my comments, and I'll get out of here. The borough sought proposal to build this scattered sites back in twenty eighteen, you got five responses. Excuse me, I was the one who provided five, pursuant to my overall class, so I guess those are the three RPM about having. The five that I saw, not a single one of them proposed any direct taxpayer contribution to the cost of constructing the scattered site development other than transferring the real estate on which they were to be located for novel consideration, one dollar. That's what we were going to do under all five of those proposals that I was allowed to see. RPM submitted one of them. Pursuing to that proposal, pursuing to the, you know, competitive process that that was undertaken, we entered into a contract with RPM which provides specifically RPM would implement and complete the development of the property, including financing, design, construction, and completion of the project at its full cost and expense. The development agreement contains an integration clause that provides this agreement constitutes the entire agreement between the parties and supersedes all prior oral and written agreements between the parties with respect to subject matter hereon. Nowhere in the contract does the borough undertake any obligation for the taxpayer to cover any construction cost whatsoever. Now, at the eleventh hour, after all the time, effort, and cost that went into this deal, the contract negotiation, the council meetings, those hours and hours of planning board meetings, to get them the permits that they needed to actually start delivering on their contractual obligations to build these. Now they're coming back to us and saying, you know what, I don't like the deal I made back in twenty twenty. I'm not making enough money out of it, and I. I'm not making enough money out of it, and I want the borough taxpayer to come out of pocket two point seven million dollars to cover a contractual obligation that I voluntarily assumed in twenty twenty, and that I have no contractual right to ask for. So this ordinance presented that, sure, fine. You know what? My my taxpayer, my decision, my neighbor. We we got, we'll figure this out. Two point seven million dollars. It it's wrong. It it's, I I believe it violates uh the fiduciary obligations that this board has had to taxpayer. I believe it violates local public contract law, which I believe applies to this contract. I believe violates the New Jersey Constitution, which every member of the governing body took a note of hold when they were sworn in. I would ask to that that I would ask that you stand up for your taxpayer. I would ask that you put the taxpayer's interest above the profits of a developer and hold them to the deal that they made in twenty twenty. What I would do, if I if I, to summarize, what I would ask you to do is vote the ordinance down. Instruct your municipal attorney to immediately demand assurances from RPM that they intend to fulfill the contractual obligations that they undertook in twenty twenty to the borough to build these scattered sites with no taxpayer handout. And if they refuse to do so, immediately revisit the project pursuant to the local public contract law while moving in the Superior Court for action for specific performance against RPM to make them complete the project that they promised to in twenty twenty, or for damages in the event that we have to spend money on another contractor to come in and do the job that they promised to do. That, I believe, is your obligation as um representatives of your taxpayers. Talking about two point seven million dollars. Yeah, I would not, I would ask, don't, don't let us be pushed around. Stand up for us. Work for your taxpayer.
And just for third points, just for the record. One is, the council in twenty eighteen decided a hundred percent affordable, right? It's state regulations at that time. Share share having such in court would not approve any one hundred percent affordable housing unless the municipality agreed to make up any shortfall in the development costs. Secondly, our spending plan at that time had one point nine million dollars plus specifically allocated for this very purpose. That amount has increased for several reasons. One is inflation over the last seven, eight years, and the second is the increase in the number of units. If the council at that time had not decided to proceed in that way, we would have been looking at three hundred units apart from the answer today instead of sixteen years. We may disagree with the constitution at that time, but it was certain that we're acting with sixteen in the term.
I I don't agree, don't disagree with it at all, and I applaud the council for undertaking the scattered development and for finding developer like RPM um to undertake, to protect taxpayer through contractual obligation with the borough to complete it at its own cost. There, just because we, and we definitely did, and you have to agree with fair share, that if no other option is available, that we're the lender or, you know, deep pocket of last resort, absolutely. But there is nothing that stops us from going into the way we did and finding a contractor like RPM or any other core or more um contractor who submitted this to undertake that, to take that risk off the taxpayer shoulders and say, we will shoulder the risk of completing the development at our full cost and expense. Essentially an indemnity to the boroughs, you know, having to come out of pocket as a lender or a payer of lack of work. And just because we have an obligation to fair share does not mean that RPM does not have an obligation to us to fulfill the terms of their contract. We just need to enforce that obligation.
Their contract needs to be ready to pair with material with our spending plan, which as I said, I believe, and again, this is what we are.
And integration clause is meant to say there is no other understanding or, you know, uh, a number of potential into, you know, interplay of laws that, you know, might pop. We have a here's the deal. The integration clause says this is the contract. It's in the contract. The entire agreement between our parties is in the contract. If it didn't make it into the contract, it's not part of our deal. There is nothing in the contract that says we have any obligation at any point to fund the cost of construction. That is the exact opposite. So that our, that RPM's risk, that's their sole responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
I'm gonna close the public hearing right now. Go ahead.
The money to pay the two point six million dollars in bonds cannot taxpayer fund. It's coming out of our court housing. Which we fund with development fee. So.
So it's not going right into debt?
It it will go as it comes in. Our other developments, the ones that we talked about earlier. Plus, every developer who builds has to pay two and a half percent.
Yes.
If you're ever wanting.
Right.
We still might be servicing it from that fund, but still be taken out.
The intent is to pay one hundred percent of the two point nine dollars.
But if the general obligation box, okay, your intent doesn't all prove, we're pregnant.
That's correct. And that, that's what we do during community meeting.
Okay, I will. Hearing on this ordinance, unless anybody else wanted to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty grand final reading and adopt this publish.
There's a second.
I'm sorry. I'm in the speech.
Anybody that have a comment? All right. I want roll call.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Yes. Senator Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
I'm saying.
Who's that again? Sorry. Um, Rob, thanks.
What do we was thinking? Did you have a say?
No, I said second.
Christine, stay.
Thank you, Derek.
Good night, Aaron. All right, we now have resolutions twenty five one 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 through twenty five one twenty eight. There's two more at the end, but I think we will discuss them because they weren't on a work agenda. Anyone have questions, comments, something you wanna pull out? That's pretty impressive that we have three new volunteers for the fire company. There's two more at the end. Yes, um, but we didn't talk, they weren't on the agenda last reading, so we're gonna do them separately, just so you have time to. Yeah, and then you can explain them.
Brock, me a question.
Yes.
Who laughed and started with the language of the last one?
Oh, this, this came from the Environmental Commission um asking that whenever we do new plantings on just borough property, that we use native species, so no bamboo. Well, and it's native.
I was gonna say, I I.
Yeah.
Promote the, you know.
Yeah, we're eliminating any invasive, non-native.
I just wanted to see the data.
Yeah. I think all the rest we discussed at last week's meeting. Right? So do I have a motion? Christine.
I move that resolution twenty five dash one eleven to twenty five dash one twenty eight be adopted.
I say.
Roll call.
Is that ready?
What's your concern?
I'm just looking at the actual language of one twenty eight here. I need to know how broad it is. I don't want it to be a thing where I won't overpromise.
Before we go to the roll, like, because I talked to Ross about this. I think your concern was if there was no, like, it just says native plants that could be added later. Like, in other words, that just gives a a long, a large range. Um, so like I said, the language is not, there's no finite aspect to the language. You know what I mean? That that was Ross's concern. We're gonna, we're gonna, in other words, someone could say, this is a native plant, or change the definition of native plant, and then we're obligated to that. So I did, that, that was what you were thinking.
I was just gonna say, we were required to, all plantings be native.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it, all bio property, that's what it is.
I think, but you see, I think there was some, like, sort of reasonable exception or something like that, like, for, like, a ball.
It could be something that's maybe not native but not invasive.
Yeah.
The, the point was, you didn't want invasive things that are gonna spread and kill others.
Invasive, yeah, definitely, against, I just.
Because there are some not native that do very well.
No, absolutely. I definitely. Um, I can abstain. If everyone wants to. Exciting, it's just a scam.
Did we finish that? Or you just started?
I'll, I'll uh vote, yeah.
You're gonna have to give it a second. So in other words, I move that resolution twenty five one eleven to twenty five one twenty seven be adopted.
Roll call.
Is that ready?
Yes.
Is the mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes.
Okay, now we move.
I move that resolution twenty five dash one twenty eight be adopted.
Second, roll call.
Is Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Senator?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Do you guys remember?
I'll say.
Okay.
Still passed. Yeah. Yeah. Finished, we're shy, let's.
Everybody, so we're up to my report? Okay, the mayor's update. Um, just one more comment on the bond ordinance. Um, originally the ask. Oh, you wanted to do it?
I was gonna say, I had.
Oh, I thought you meant my report.
Oh.
You can, whichever. Anyway, I'll say, the original ask was five million dollars. Um, we had two different attorneys as well as a financial advisory company go through all the numbers, all the expenses, all their receipts, do a whole financial audit on what RPM came up with. And managed to then, and made some, some changes, some adjustments, and that's how we got it down to two point five, so. Um, thank you for your work on that, Jack and and Matt and and yeah, financial, they did a good job. And so it's not, you know, they're not unreasonable costs. All right, so, as many of you know, I did go over the edge on May thirtieth. We had on June first, we had the ribbon cutting for the historic markers. So if you, the, the main one is at the library. And from there, you can see where all the other markers are. Um, there's at all our historic sites downtown. We had Senator Brownick here and Commissioner Sui as well for the event. Um, we, I attended the Arbor Day event at Benwell and the middle school. The shade tree committee put that together. They planted a couple of cherry trees there. So hopefully they'll grow and do well, and I guess they're native cherries.
Yeah.
Yeah. I attended the Somerset County Office on Aging Public Hearing, which they do once a year. Uh, we had a public safety committee with the surrounding towns and um I had mentioned to them that um H A A S, Haas Alert System that the Police Chiefs Association mentioned, and it's a a unit that you put in a car or emergency vehicle, and what it does is when there's something going on on the road, there's an accident, there's a vehicle on the side broken down, and a police car there, they, it sends a notice to all the cars within, I forget, thirty seconds on your little screen. It'll say, alert, vehicle ahead, emergency vehicle ahead, so that people slow down because there's been a tremendous amount of accidents where people hit people on the shoulders. Um, so I had a meeting with them today. Uh, the pricing is not out. I mean, it's fairly reasonable, so we're gonna discuss it at our next uh safety committee meeting and see if there's a way that maybe we can get one or two of those units. Um, they're pretty cool, actually. We had the senior breakfast at the library I attended. Great turnout, great music. How many people did you have?
I think it was over forty.
Yeah, it looked like it. Yeah, it was, it was lovely. Thank you for doing that. Um, I attended the Benwell Garden Open House. If you've never seen that garden, it is phenomenal what they've managed to do in that whole inner little uh atrium in the middle there. And I think they put out a card too, where you can, okay, an honor system that you can pick up the produce. Um, I attended the Somerset County Business Partnership Women in Business Reception at the AC Hotel. Anybody been there? It's pretty impressive. Anybody?
Yes. It's nice, yeah.
It's, it's really very nice, yeah. Uh, I did attend a fire, a meeting of the fire um department, as we agreed that I would liaison with them. We told them about the increase in their allocation for the year. They're having some issues with um daytime emergency calls because now that we have pretty full city M D here. They're having a tremendous amount of people going to the hospital and the, so uh we're gonna try and set up a meeting with them to work out how we can.
Essentially.
Because a lot of them aren't our residents either, and so, you know, it's
Yeah.
It's hard with volunteers to cover.
So just to clarify for that?
Yeah.
So City M D is getting our first day of responding to pick up people or bring them to City M D?
Well, they put in a, you know, a transport request, so it goes to us.
They should pay for that.
Yeah, so we're really, and actually, the C O O of Summit Medical lives in town.
No, it's really, it's, it's for them to bring from City M D to the hospital.
Right.
So I, I felt like they were. Leaving customers out.
No, no, taking them to the hospital.
Yeah.
So they did, they're using them more like just for transportation, which is not what they're here for.
Some meetings don't be good, though, just to say, you know, to get their processes, yeah.
Okay, do, um. Legislative committee meeting for the League of Municipalities I went to, um, which I think I've said before is such a great uh well organized, you know, they break all the current legislation coming up into different topics, different committees, and each one is reviewed and we either uh support it or don't support it, and then um the league people go and defend or, you know, on these bills. So they're really on top of all the legislation that's coming up that will affect us. The library summer reading kickoff. That was last Saturday. I had a little table for mayor's wellness. And uh it was a great turnout, even though it rained and we had to move it inside. So if you haven't signed up for summer reading, it's for adults too. I attended the Somerset County Business Partnership Biz Fest at the Somerset Patriots' ballpark. If you have never gone to that, it's free to the public. They have just about every business and nonprofit sets up a table um with all kinds of information on services, jobs, products. It's pretty impressive. Well, we had a whiteboard meeting. Oh, the Taco and Empanada Festival on Saturday was really good. They had how many trucks? What was it?
Oh, uh, it's.
Eight?
Eleven.
Eleven.
I think I counted eleven.
Eleven trucks, bouncy houses, um. Yeah, all day they had lots of, they kept switching them out. Yeah, so I think it was well, well attended, well done. Uh, I had a meeting, as you mentioned, flash vote coming up. Um, I forget, I think we're up to almost three hundred on the panel so far. They did send out an SMS. And. And I will meeting with them Wednesday, um. I think what we're gonna do for the first survey, if you agree, is um, ask about Borough Communications, how they want to hear from us, what methods they use. Because that was one of our goals that we had set, was, you know, concerned about how people get information from us. So I think that's what we're gonna work on. When we have it done, and you'll all get to see it, it shouldn't be more than five minutes if it's that, but. And, uh, oh, that was it. Yeah, okay, I'm good. Questions?
Thank you.
Now it's your turn. You can do it again.
I think Jack, um, under listening. If you didn't do that, it's four hundred and fifty, so, yeah.
They're big, Jack.
And so I can hardly, um, um, and the recreation department, and, and hope that it's the first time. At the last meeting, somebody brought up cam and, um, said that it's full. Uh, so I talked to the recreation director about that, and he said, we have roughly approved people that is ongoing rolling registration, so he wants to. Right, so he wants, it's not like we cut him off. So, uh, I will, I asked, I asked him that, and he said something out to everybody in the community, uh, the people that. Everybody, and then she said, you can look that up again. I did want to, um, so I can't start tomorrow. Um, I did want to announce that, um, a long time employee, Cindy Barrister is retiring on Monday, it's her last meeting, and Friday will be her fun, her fun time. Monday starts.
Are you doing anything? You're too.
I, uh, want to mention even a general review, the, um, police chief writing in rescind his retirement application. So we're very happy to welcome him back for at least the next two and a half. We're happy to have him. The department sent me that. I mean, you never left, but.
Yeah.
Um, and then the good news is that I'm walking out of the hologram.
I saw it, it's very nice.
It looks beautiful, I think. Um, the grass, they figure out. Uh, I, it's a throw, um, E D W said that they will, you know, make sure that we put the grass seed on. Um, also, the grass by next to me, more dog bags stand.
Yeah.
Um, we will put that in as well. And, uh, we do have, I know that you had mentioned this, we do have signs put in, which is trick for bad for park and, um.
We have them.
Um, we understood that they have them and, uh, uh, actually, the way that we're aware, uh, I think there was, we've changed and G B W changed their recreation. That kind of got lost in the tunnel, so, um, they do have them at the building park and the model.
Nice, okay. Are we doing a ribbon cutting for the pad?
We should do that. So, you know. When you're ready.
Maybe let the grass grow a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. It does look nice.
It is. Doing good, I'm stopping it, but, yeah, the end of all.
It's actually wider than I thought it was, I mean, too, it's really, and if people were using it.
Top of those.
Yeah. Yeah, people were, were walking, instead of walking in the road, which was nice. Is it that long? Are we walking on that? Things move slowly. But we get there. They keep hanging in there. Thank you. All right, we need to, uh, accept the department monthly reports. Christine, okay, did you do?
I'll move to accept the reports. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
All in favor? Opposed? Yeah. Uh, correspondence, I think we've got that covered. July council meeting, we have a issue with the date.
That, uh, our new business. This involved a patient that day, and, uh, one was single. Um, she didn't know that we were doing that, or that we had planned to hurt.
Not a council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, man.
Okay, and then we have two more resolutions, so do you want to just?
C O T, uh, local aid, um, applications. The, uh, deadline to get the mail will be different. Um, and so, um, the T W driver, and we're, went over all the roads and, uh, they, in, in spite of the, our first choice is hard gravel and second is balance. Um, the road, uh, oh, it's hard gravel and very well shallow and will meet the criteria of number of parts. And, um, apparently, and we, so that's our first choice and our second, those we put two, and we only, we only take one, but second choice is balance. Um, so if you're okay with those, uh, we will ask the, um, engineer to comply for a couple of factors.
Well, okay, move that.
I'm moving twenty five against one twenty nine be adopted.
I'd say.
Roll call.
Mr. Vero?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Vayner?
Yes.
Mr. Vero?
Yes.
He got Vayner?
Yes.
All right, interesting.
I move that resolution twenty five dash one thirty be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Vayner?
Yes.
Mr. Vero?
Yes.
Mr. Vayner?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Vero?
Yes.
All right, and now we have our second open session for any island that wasn't having a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak.
Might I just say something about the one corner that the, um, Mullins old colony? That intersection is like looking really good.
Yeah.
Cause a lot, I get a lot of questions about it, but it's still in process.
I'm just gonna, that and our public facts, uh, county.
Yeah.
Talking about her here, I think they, they, that, um, that's put in uh, A D A compliant, um, rank at front walk and, uh, flashing speed for that is.
Right.
Flashing, um, given that it's corner of the old colony and
Mullins.
Old colony, child, child, so, it's really child.
And then. And to do, continue sidewalk from, to help to where the, in, in the places where there are sidewalks, uh.
Bill, bill of the.
Yeah. What we are asking you to do um, not find them, that's right, for the transition, so.
Speaking of sidewalks, I don't know how, like, I'm assuming there's sort of like a list of, like, you know, kind of a wish list of where we would want sidewalks, kind of thing. The, the one that seems to just pop in my head, and we're talking about that, is on Mount Arrie Road, where there's a gap between, call it like street.
We've asked.
Yep, he's bouncing.
Say, yeah, you can pay for it. But they don't, they have to cut it down, so it's all over the world. They usually combine.
Dirt path, like, where the sidewalk end.
Yeah.
Like a little, like, well-minted, because people walk on it. So there is something here.
About at least putting gravel, wood chips or something down. Yeah.
It's a brand from the marine rest.
Yes.
Also, um, can we even remember about I had over a year ago, he asked for a beacon at one of Mount Arrie.
Yes.
A lot of people still that way. Um, and they approved it, um, supposedly, maybe they're in the same time they're doing, and, um, it's a mentor.
It's a beacon.
It flashes.
It's a great idea. Signs on songs.
You ever see a chatham by the one of the park where people are, want frosting?
Yeah. Something.
So it gets your attention.
Yeah.
And.
I thought somebody get bumped by a car walking in the trouble.
Okay. Okay, so nobody for the open session? Then I will close the public session. And we do have an executive session, so do I have a motion? To adjourn to executive?
I'll make a motion.
Second, second contract negotiations, we are not coming back out. Long favor? Thank you for coming.